Put City Council meeting to order from Monday, May 16th, 2022, 6:30 PM. City Council Room, all members of the council are present. Mr. Vaschan is joining us remotely this evening. Others present include Laura Dogan, City Manager, and James Johnson, our Clerk-Treasurer. The second item on the agenda was to approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2022.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion we approve the two May 2022 council minutes.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
No.
Second one by Mr. Charbonneau, any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Next was comments by members of the public. I don't see any, you had just signed in.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not going to sign.
The next item is a statement of equity and racial justice presentation. We have Bob Carnish, I believe is how you pronounce your last name, and Al Wakefield here to give us a presentation. They're joining us remotely. Which gentleman would like to go first?
Yeah. Carnish speaking, pronounced correctly, thank you. I want to say good evening to Mayor Minette and the City Council members. We're very grateful to you for having us on the agenda this evening. We're pleased to give you an introduction to the concept of increasing diversity and inclusion in Vermont. And then we'll be here for, we'll stand by for question and answer if there are any, and, and then I assume you may want to table through discussion or move to discussion and action at a future meeting. So, it started about a year and a half ago when I learned from my cousin, who's the Chairman of the Select Board in Franklin, that they had just adopted something he called a Declaration of Inclusion. And, so what is the Declaration of Inclusion? It is the act of a town or a city of expressing a desire to be open and welcoming to all people, and to make a statement condemning discrimination against any and all minority So why is this important? First, you might say that it's the patriotic thing to do because our U.S. Constitution tells us that all people are created equal. And yet we know from the news that all people are not being created equal around the country. Vermont needs people, and especially young people, to balance our aging population and to maintain a dynamic economy. We have a suggested declaration on our website, which, which most cities and towns have adopted. Currently, currently 48 towns have adopted, and that represents about 225,000 Vermonters. The website, vermontdeclarationofinclusion.org, is, which I think is in your handout, that Ms. Dogan may have provided for you today. Our senses have been sharpened by events such as the murder of George Floyd. Certainly, an event, and events like this that we do not want to have happening here in Vermont. So that certainly is a compelling reason by itself. But the 2020 census indicates that in 10 years Vermont's population barely grew by 2%, in fact, less than 2%. In some counties, like Rutland County where I live, actually lost population. And, not only that, but the population that we have is aging. So, you know, a dwindling or stagnant population and, and an aging population is, is, is not a recipe for a good economy going into the future in Vermont. We need money to maintain our, our infrastructure and, and our services. So welcoming people to Vermont is not only the right thing to do, it's the smart thing to do for the future of Vermont. It's a moral imperative and an economic imperative. So with that little introduction, I will turn it over to my friend and colleague, Al Wakefield, to talk about our goals, the partners that have joined us along the way, and the current status of our effort to make Vermont the most welcoming state in the Union. Al?
Appears he's not muted, but I...
We're not hearing you, Al.
We cannot hear, yes, we cannot hear him.
We have, we're having some bad storms down here, and that may account for an unstable connection. I can fill in a little bit until Al... Shall I do that?
Yes, yes, if you could.
Yes. Al under contact. All right, well, I'm, I'm very sorry, Al is, Al is a much better speaker than I am. You know, along the way, we, we have gained allies or partners, and one of which is the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. They have been very positive, and, and they're, and they're working diligently on developing a guideline for cities and towns to, to, to do what we call implementing the Declaration of Inclusion. And, and then the Vermont State Chamber has, has been a very important partner. So, the Vermont State Chamber, very important, in fact, in fact, they, they're the ones who created our website for us. And then more recently, the Vermont Interfaith Alliance has, has come on board in a, in a big way, and, and is giving it more exposure throughout the state. So, we now have, as I mentioned earlier, 48 cities and towns representing 35 or 40% of the Vermont population. And, I would say all of these towns have, have developed a, a committee to deal with equity throughout the, throughout the municipality. Some are, some are calling it DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, others they're calling it Equity 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 Committee, Al, I'm speaking to the council. It should put your voice...
No, we're gonna have, you're gonna have feedback if you do that with your phone, so that's not gonna work.
Yeah. It's not working. It's not working, no. Al was gonna try to link up through his microphone, but it, it, it wouldn't work. So, that's too bad, but I'm happy to answer questions. We think it's the right thing to do. We hope that you, your council will give us serious consideration.
Okay. Nope, still, still not hearing you, sir.
How about now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm no technological genius, but are you getting an echo there, Al, because I...
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Turn off your computer, Al.
It's all, it's all off. How you doing?
Yeah, there's no more echo, and that's, that was causing it, so go ahead.
That's good. Okay, I apologize for that, too bad, technology sometimes lets you down, it could be a storm, I'm not sure what. But Bob, Bob said, you know, our, our vision is that Vermont will become the most welcoming state and secure state for all people. That's, that's all with a capital L, L, in, in, in the state. And as Bob mentioned, you know, 48 towns have adopted thus far, 226,000 people, that covers 35% of the population. The governor has, has now for the second year in a row made the second week in May Inclusion Week, and we had a lot of activity that, that last week. Most significantly probably being Newport, they've had a, a series of events and festivities which I frankly, I actually attended. It was just a wonderful, wonderful kind of thing. But if you're looking to a town that has probably set the pace, I think Milton's probably it. Middlebury has moved to not only adopt, but to, to begin to implement through training programs and various things, and you've probably been reading about Winuski that adopted, but showed very little progress in terms of real inclusion, and now they, they are working on that. And so I think, you know, we're in a, we're in a competitive environment here in Vermont, keep our young people here, keep people working, keep people working in a good job attracting companies. And we're only going to prosper economically if we can attract, continue to attract and retain good people in the state. So, the, the Act of Inclusion has not only, you know, a moral thing to do, but a realistic thing to, to recognize in terms of population growth, demographic trends, and resulting in the need for talented and skilled people here in Vermont. And so, we're moving, we're moving forward over the next 50, over the next rather 350 or 60 days or so, to get an additional 50 towns to adopt, and to begin, and commit, and begin to move forward on implementing policies and procedures and programs, et cetera. That results in people feeling welcome to come to Vermont and to, and to stay here. And so, you know, if Newport moves in that direction, and we certainly hope it does, it would be one of the leaders in, in the state, I think, in saying to the rest of the state, and saying to the country that Newport and Vermont are welcoming places to be. And so Bob and I, and Norman, all of whom are oxygenarians, are doing this because we love Vermont. I've been here 35 years, Bob's been here over 35 years, and Norm Cohen's been here 30-plus years or so. We're not getting paid for what we're doing, we love Vermont, we're committed to Vermont. I've had a wonderful, wonderful life in Vermont, I think brought some economic value here. Bob certainly has, in running a major, major inn and hotel and dining facility in Vermont, and Norm Cohen has been a very, very successful lawyer here. And so, we hope, I think we've probably gone beyond our time because of technological issues, we hope that Newport will, will move forward and adopt it. And we're here in the background to help you do whatever you need to do to move forward on this initiative. So, thank you very, very much for having us here. Sorry about the difficulties, that's our message, specifically if we could do it, and are available for questions, and try to give you some answers.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council members on this? So, I guess I do have one question. So if we adopt this, it looks like... Oops. Oh, wait a second. Oh, wait, okay. If we adopt this, you're looking for us to form a committee, I'm assuming, from what I understand, from under the implement, is that true? To form a committee to come up with policies and various things?
There are numerous ways to do that, and every, every city council, Board of Aldermen, or Select Board knows this town and has, you know, has obviously the prerogative and the obligation to do this any way that they want. We suggest you take a look at the brochure which you have in front of you, and it identifies steps that you can take to begin to immediately implement. What some towns do, to more directly answer your question, is that they do form equity and inclusion committees to take a look at, at all the options available to them, do what fits their community's effect, and move in those directions. And they may, you know, they are the initial strategy planning group, but they will be calling on the rest of you as City Council to help them begin to move forward on how to make Newport a welcoming and belonging community.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Well, thank you for your presentation this evening. The council's gonna go through all the information you presented, so we'll, we'll move on from there. We'll proceed and move on. Yes, Mr. Roy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was a deep gentleman's information, Chris Roy, report daily. So what's, what's the benefit to the community, if it just to people know that they're welcome here, or is there a cost for this, or anything, anything along those lines?
There, there is no cost to doing this. There's procedures that we can follow, or potentially follow, to help implement this if we, you know, choose to sign on to the declaration. So there is absolutely no cost.
I think there might be indirect costs if you're gonna form a committee that's gonna be looking at policy and trying to write things, all of that would have to have legal review. So, on the face of things, it may not cost anything, but I think in the long run, it will incur some costs to implement. Not that it's good or bad, just that I believe it would be a cost.
That's true. So, Mr. Mayor, so if this is broken or violated, then are the consequences to the person or group or whoever?
I would think there would be. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think there would be. If you have, if you are adopting something, and then you're going to be writing policy on it and things like that, and if you're putting things in policy, and somebody decides that you've broken that policy, then of course it's gonna be repercussions for that.
If I may add something, please, I, I understand there are some grants available. There is a fund that has been set up at the Vermont Community Foundation, which will grant up to $10,000 specifically for helping towns implement the Declaration. And I understand that American Rescue Plan money can be used for implementation as well.
Anything else? Then I guess we thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. And if you need any, any references or any help in the meantime, please feel free, Paul, Laura, anybody on the, on the, on the City Board to give us a call.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much. Take good care.
Take care. The next item was put off from the last meeting. It is a continued discussion on the water and sewer rates. I'm gonna turn it over to the City Manager.
Sure. So since the last meeting, we've worked with Jennifer Hopkins, and Jennifer sent a memo to the council today indicating that our math was incorrect on sewer. And she would like, emphasized that the sewer rates are likely to be higher than 3%. In my memo, I indicated that it's 3% across the board, rounded to the nearest whole number. So, I wanted to point that out to folks so they realize that it does not change the grid, it does not change the rates and fees that we have, or that was posted on the website. So, all the numbers are on the rates and fees as proposed, and I guess I would take questions at this point in terms of the math, or implications of how this could potentially affect the rates going forward if the Water Commissioners choose to adopt this.
Council members, do you have questions before I turn it over, or before I ask, entertain folks in the audience? Nope? You don't? And I saw her hand, yes?
I guess the first thing that you as Water Commissioners need to consider is whether a rate increase is needed. And when you do that, because you were in a situation where you weren't collecting enough money. So then I went back through the annual reports. In 2017, pulled out the '16 to '17 period, I'm sorry, we're talking initially about the '15, 2015 to 2016 period. You had a surplus, you took in $229,000 more than the expenses paid out. In 2016 to '17, that annual year, you took in $211,000 in surplus. You didn't put down the surplus there, but if you subtract the actual money you took in from everybody, the combined sewage and water, and you subtract out all of your expenses, you had a surplus of another $200,000. In the annual period from 2017 to 2018, the surplus for water alone was $219,000, and the surplus for sewage was $298,000. A combined surplus of over $500,000 for the 2017 to '18 period. In 2018 to '19, the surplus was only, I believe, about $9,000. But we're already out in front, about a million, over a million dollars. And then, the surplus in 2019 to '20 was $26,000, I believe. And then, and you, you need to check my math, but of order, we're talking about a million dollars or more. Finally, in 2020 to 2021, there is a deficit, a deficit of about, between sewage and water, finally, of about $180,000. But we have over a million dollars of surplus that went into that enterprise fund. So, I guess you have to figure, you don't know yet whether or not you're running at a surplus or a deficit this year, though you should be able to estimate pretty closely because we're 10 months into this year. But at any rate, unless you're under a, over a million dollars in deficit for this year, we've broken even. You've, you've got a million dollars sitting in that budget to pay for quite a few deficits before you need to start increasing the rate. So that's, do you need a rate increase? Well, if you, you guys looked at the water budget each year and examined it, you might find out that some of the expenses that you're paying for are also not warranted. You know, is the capital budget warranted? You never decided whether or not you needed a capital water budget or sewer budget. So that's the second thing. Second place where you might be thinking about saving. When you look at a situation and you think, oh, my, my expenses finally, this, this last period from 2020 to 2021, we were down $180,000, you might say, well, is there a reason for that? One thing is we can raise the expenses, I'm sorry, one thing is we can raise how much money these suckers, these peasants put in to this budget, or we can say, oh, let's look at the expenses, maybe we shouldn't be spending so much. But overall, what I'm suggesting is, you really haven't considered, one, what do you do with that surplus you get each year? You know, just let it add up and add up until we're in three, four hundred million dollars worth? Or do we use some of it on deficits? And two, shouldn't you be looking at expenses more closely to see whether or not we shouldn't be able to stay within what we expect to spend? And so, and three, the other thing I did was look at some other water budgets around Vermont and in New England. You know, some people have, some, some cities have six places where they kick in on how much water you're using. And the people who are using lots of water, the big manufacturers are way up at the top, and they're paying more. Not, not for the water really, though it's put in terms of that, they're paying for the infrastructure. And let me tell you, the big companies, they can put out whatever expense that they're using in water to their customers, so they just pass it on. Who is a little guy who's paying $175 per three months gonna pass it on to? I mean, I can't say to the kid, you know, deciding to do lemonade, you gotta, you gotta pay me for that water, I get, I get it back, I can pass it on. I can't pass it on to anybody. So, I don't think you need a rate increase at all. So I don't think you need a rate increase at all. And I don't think that you should be thinking about it until you've looked at past budgets, the current budget, and some other places where big manufacturers and big users of water are paying more for their water because they can pass it on and we cannot. We, the peons, cannot pass it on. Three things.
Do you want to respond to any of that? Any of her, you know?
I think, looking at Jim, I don't believe that these enterprise funds can have a surplus.
They're not supposed to have. I don't know where the surplus is coming from. I mean, I don't know a lot of money in there, but they all have talent. And part of the surplus.
You have operating.
I can't imagine how tall they are or how big they are.
You have operating expenses. But.
I can't hear you, really. And I don't understand how you put a surplus in the annual report. And then where does the money go if it doesn't go into the enterprise fund?
Sorry about the asking. All I can tell you is those funds are not supposed to be carrying a surplus at all. So I don't know where the surplus.
But they have like $2 million in the enterprise fund?
No, I don't. I don't deal with a water sewer budget. But I think there is money in the surplus, in the surplus fund for the water tower.
No, the water tower is not included in any of that.
No, no, I don't. I'm not familiar with water.
Well, but this is the Water Commission. They need to be familiar with it. They're making the decisions about the water rate based on these things, or they should be.
I think that every audit is complex. I think that one of these funds operates at a deficit every year. Is it sewer that operates at a deficit? Water?
I know for years that maybe the water fund, the sewer fund, they're a lot of money. At one point, one of those funds was in debt almost to $10,000.
Right. Right. So I guess.
I don't see how they could. I'm sure the auditors know that those funds aren't supposed to carry a surplus. How they.
Jim, can you speak up so we can hear you?
Sorry. I'm sure the auditors understand that those funds aren't supposed to be carrying a surplus and how they can come up with a surplus. Those funds are audited every year along with the general fund.
But it says that you take in like.
Maybe it's a question for the auditors. I don't.
Right. It's a good question.
I agree. But maybe the auditors can answer that. I can't. I don't deal with a water sewer budget. We bill it, collect the money, and that's as far as we go.
And I'm not sure that we have the same interpretation, which is why if discussing this with the auditors is something the water commissioners won't do, that would be up to them. But I don't think we would define within those books in the same way.
Well, don't you think you should know whether or not you've got a surplus each year before you decide whether or not to raise the rate?
We don't, I don't believe we have a surplus. So we have a difference of opinion, but.
Well, would you publish this for me to read and believe? Every year?
I'm sorry. I was looking in the audit, the actual audit report, not that. I'm not sure. I don't have it. That should be bookmarked. Whatever.
Should be in the back. Let me add a question.
That's in the last, Public Safety, Cemetery, Recreation, Law and Management. Oh, well. We can always put a note into the auditor and have him do a detailed explanation. Now, I do know, I do know, under the sewer fund, we did lose $180,000 a year because we stopped treating Leach A. And they were paying $180,000 or $200, whatever it was. So when Act 250 said we could no longer treat Leach A, there was that drop in revenue on the sewer side of the budget.
That's included. That's all included in the total.
Well, don't, I'm just, let me explain, you know, what I know as far as the loss of revenue. You know, I'm not trying to argue or whatever, but let me just, you know, I'm thinking in my mind, and I know that's a loss of revenue in that one year. It's continuous. It's not just one year. That's a continuous loss every year in the sewer fund. Or the loss of that income every year, ever since Act 250 said we could no longer treat Leach A. So that income is down every year in that fund since they implemented that, which was like, again, what year? Maybe you could find it.
And if I'm correct, rates have increased to make up for that? If I'm correct in that, right?
We've done an increase to make up.
So we lost $180, but we've not increased rates to make up for that $180,000?
This is the first increase since 2016.
And as far as equipment goes, Tom Berdinger can explain that. But capital items, I'm going to use the bucket loader, for example. A good majority of that is charged to water and sewer because that's used to dig up for water leaks. Equipment like that and other capital equipment is divided where the majority of the capital cost goes to water and sewer because that's where it's used the most. Unlike the sweeper, which has gone to the taxpayers, the water and sewer rates cover more of the costs of equipment like that on the capital side. Because I know if I had a water leak and my sewer backed up and they had to dig up, I wouldn't want to not have a bucket loader. I'm using that as the example of what we bought, you know, in the last few years. So, yeah, two-thirds of it does go to water and sewer versus Public Works and the taxpayers. I mean, versus the taxpayers under the capital item.
You guys don't discuss that. You don't discuss whether or not that's an accurate.
It is accurate because it's used the majority of the time in water and sewer.
But you're supposed to vote on it.
We vote on the capital budget, and that's part of the capital budget.
But you don't vote on the rest of the.
No, but the enterprise, I think I've explained how enterprise funds work. You budget the expenses and you raise the revenues to cover the expenses. So you don't vote on it. It's like a business. You have to, yeah.
But if you have surpluses, they should.
But according to the auditors, we don't. And so, according to the auditors, we don't.
Then don't publish this each year. It's a lie.
Well, I'm not going to argue that aspect. There was a question behind you.
So I'm working off of the numbers that this lady in front of me has given. And I'm looking at the timing of it all. Because my first question was historically, before everybody went on meters, not everybody, but the movement towards meters began. Commercial users were paying $224.26 for their water and sewer.
Commercial users have always been metered, unlike the home residents. So commercials.
Well, you have in your documents here that these are fixed rates for non-metered commercial users.
Just because I'm just on the water committee. There are a few, and I believe of the commercial, there were something like 30 or 40 commercial places that weren't metered that were on the flat rate. And the majority of the meters in the city, and I think Stacy can address this, were the commercial ones, et cetera.
Okay.
So this was for, those are the outliers. I, you know, there are seven, you know, houses on the ledges.
That's fine.
So it is a distortion of sorts.
Okay.
But you are correct.
Okay.
It was to incentivize them to get a meter.
And so the next question becomes, when the metered system went in for the commercial users? You're saying that they were, most of them were metered prior to 2016?
Most were, and some were not because it was a requirement that they buy their own meters. Therefore, when the whole thing of moving towards meters went and they didn't have to buy their meters and retire the replacement of meters, more of them did. And I don't know, do you know how many aren't metered? I think, I believe that maybe there's.
There's a fan, commercials?
Maybe not, but we're talking sometimes a base, you know, a registered daycare. That's an industrial commercial user.
Yeah.
There's a few of those, literally their homes.
Yeah.
So they, you know, they're charged a little bit higher than the regular residential rate.
Okay.
But not very many anymore. We've got most of them.
So at the time of the 2016, that's when the rate structure that you guys worked on, correct? Okay. At that time.
Sorry, Paul.
What was that?
I was just saying, sorry, Paul, we weren't going through the main.
Right.
Yeah. I'd like to think they'll still go through these.
Okay. So at the time of the 2016 rate structure, I'm looking at like the heavy hitters, like the hospital, the prison, Columbia Forest Products, Eastside Restaurant, places like that that use a whole lot of water. Is it not true that their water and sewer bills went up by thousands of dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
They had, the hospital had one meter that was like a residential meter. So they did. I believe the hospital went up something like $10,000 a quarter. Columbia Forest Products, again. I think the prison also, a major user, went up about $20,000. So, and they're paying the exact same rate that a human being is paying.
Okay. So back in 2016, when this rate structure went in, I'm hearing from people that are well-versed in the subject matter that the heavy hitters, their bills went up by thousands, tens of thousands of dollars per quarter. So when you look at the numbers that the lady in front of me has given, this is not a coincidence that in 2017, '18, you had a half-million-dollar surplus. This is the effect of the 2016 rate structure going into effect and the heavy hitters paying thousands, tens of thousands of dollars of more money. What's very curious is that in subsequent years, this surplus disappears. That's curious. Because Columbia Forest Products and the hospital and the prison are still paying their tens of thousands of dollars more in their metered rates. So where did the money go? I suspect if I had the time to dive into the data to the extent that the lady in front of me has done, we would start to see increases in expenses. And it suddenly became aware, oh, my Lord, we can't have a half-million-dollar surplus in our water budget. We got to spend this. And that's exactly what occurred. I do not think it is a coincidence that this surplus just evaporates in the subsequent years. Also, in the fall, when the city council approved the water tower and they voted in the water tower, it was voted in on the premise that every account would experience a flat $10 increase in their rate. You're now looking at amending this rate structure, and I see no mention of that $10 flat rate. I would like to know if it is incorporated, and if so, where?
Okay. It's not incorporated because it's not in existence yet.
And when it is in existence, how does the Water Commission intend to incorporate it?
We're going to figure out the expenses. The vote allows us to spend not more than, I believe it's 4.9, I think, is the number, just going from memory. And we'll do more analytics, just like we did for this one, and present a rate for the water commissioners to decide whether or not they want to do that.
So 4.9 is a percentage, Ms. Dolan?
No, I think, I think that's what the bond vote was going from memory. Does anybody else remember?
I don't remember if that can be found. I think that's about this.
It's in that range. So at that time, you know, that was an estimate that was given to us in 2019, 2020. And that's our, that's the limit that we can spend. So when we get to that point, if we spend less, that'll be advantageous. And if we spend more, then we've got to, we've got to figure it out.
So I guess in closing, as I'm sitting here, listening to the council respond to the lady in front of me, I almost feel like I've lost my mind because I'm hearing everyone say, well, I really don't know, and we'd have to call with auditor, and we don't know this, and we don't know that.
It's because I didn't have the report right here.
But what I'm seeing is you folks don't know. You don't have the data. You don't know where this money is going. You don't know. You can't respond to this.
You do know where the money's going. It's going for expenses that you have to pay for. Wages go up. Other expenses go up. We have to pay, we had an increase, I think, in what you have to pay the state of Vermont for the use of water.
But with all due respect, Mayor.
But let me just go through this here real quick. The change in net position for the, ending June 30th, 2021. The sewer fund had a net loss of $417,168 per the auditor. The water fund had a net loss of $61,899. Now, there are increases in the water budget because we are implementing water meters at no cost to the actual user. And a water meter costs, I don't know, Jennifer, what's, $500? So the city is implementing water meters. Originally, they were going to, we had 100 test cases, and they were going to let those go for free, and they wouldn't have to pay for the test cases. But then the council voted to not charge anybody to have, and we voted to implement water meters, and they would be installed in the residential homes. And so that, I know, was an increase in expenses. Now, this net position, Jim, is that what?
But, Mr. Mayor, that expense is going to be a one-time expense per household. That's not a recurring expense. You're looking at raising rates that are going to be recurring.
Let me, the water meters are being implemented over time. And we budget only so much a year to implement water meters. It's not like we're doing it all at once.
It's going to be done in two to three years, and the rate increase is going to be forever.
Right. Right. But the expense side has been increasing. You have wages increasing in the water and sewer department. You've got other expenses increasing.
The more water meters you install, generally, the less water that gets used as well.
Correct.
So you have to compensate for that as well.
But once again, let's look at the labor. You gave us the hourly rates, okay? And you gave us the hourly rate in reference to the Vacta truck. You supplied us with absolutely no numbers in the aggregate. It is numbers in the aggregate that count. If you have one employee whose wages increase from $27 to $45, that is a drop in the bucket. If you have 200 employees, now we're starting to talk some money. So just giving us the hourly rate increase without the aggregate number that's attached there too is absolutely not being transparent.
No, those are fees that are charged if we're hired to do work. That's not, that's not part of the equation.
You obviously have a historical number that you could use as an average. If you look back at.
You just answered the question. Though that fee you're talking about is not charged to us. That is the fee that if a private individual hired the city to use the equipment. So if I needed the Vacta truck, I'd be charged $45 an hour. It's not a fee that's being passed on to the rate payers as far as the whole city. It's an individual rate that you pay. If I call up Tom Berdinger and say, I need to hire you with the Vacta truck to pump out my drainage system at my house, I'm going to be charged $45 an hour to use that. Well, I wouldn't be using it, but for the city to do that, that is what that is.
So why was it put in here that we will note that the labor rate is more than 3% as though it's some sort of justification of this rate increase? Why is this inserted in that, in that way?
For transparency, so that when folks realize what they're asking for from the city, the rate is known. It's the same, it's the same process we use when we're setting rates for our facilities in our recreation department. We want to make sure that people know what material costs. It's the best way that we can do it.
But it's inserted in this letter as though it is an expense to justify the 3% increase.
I think that.
So what I'm hearing is this is an. So what I'm hearing is this is an income stream.
If, if I think.
Let, let her explain things, please. Let's let, let's not just cut people off, let's try to, you, you ask questions, let's let the city manager answer the question the best she can.
I would draw your eye to the water and sewer rates form that I hope that you have. And if you don't, I think there's a few extra right here if you need some more. Because I think that what we tried to do was outline this in a more effective way. We did it in an Excel spreadsheet, for example, so that the lines line up better. And you can see that there's.
This is the document?
Yep, there's water rates, there's sewer rates, and then there's service fees. So I think that, that's an attempt to answer your question, once you've had a chance to look at that.
No, I already have this, this is part of the original documentation that was disseminated. So I'm still back at the fact that we don't have any type of balance sheet going on. We, we are not seeing all the expenses against all of the revenue. I just don't understand how we're, how the council is supposed to make an informed decision. I mean, I also am curious if the council is aware that a family of four that currently is on the flat rate, if they use anywhere in the neighborhood of the state average of water for a family of four, their sewer and water bill is going to double. It's going to double. And I'm not certain that the council really is aware of this. And I look at gas prices being very high now, the cost of eating a home. As these families, you wanna draw families to Newport. You wanna revitalize Newport. You want businesses to have employees available, people of working age have children. And you're not gonna be able to attract these families if you are charging them $1,000 a year for water and sewer.
They're paying for what they use. And thus, I'm a firm believer in paying for what you use. Electricity is the same way. You pay for what you use in electricity, the rates just went up in electricity. Now, let me, let me finish, please. You pay, I've always been that way, you pay for what you use. I should not, because I'm a low, I'm one of the, I'm one of the lowest water users in the city. And Jennifer over here have a city. And the whole rate structure came about in metering is because the rate payers were subsidizing these multifamily apartments. That's really where it came about, is because the council, it really was an eye-opening to the council how unfair the system was. We were subsidizing multifamily homes. And as a single, you know, and senior citizens were having issues. And so that is why the rate structure came about. And I am a hundred percent adamant, you pay for what you use. Electricity, water, gasoline, heating oil, you know, this, this constant where I'm a low water user, I'm supposed to subsidize everyone else? I don't agree with that philosophy at all. I don't mind helping people, but I don't agree with low water users being penalized to subsidize families. If you wanna, if you choose to have a family, you need to pay for the water and the electricity and all that usage. I've always been a firm believer in that. You know, I don't believe that I, single people or senior citizens or whatever should be penalized. You know, and I did nothing to change my water usage since I had a meter put in. I just happen to use very little water. And, I mean, I water my flowers in this last dry spell, I washed my truck and my, my other things, but I'm still one of the low water users and I just don't, and I don't believe in wasting it either. But maybe Jennifer can elaborate on the original structure and how it came about too.
The structure is everybody's paying for the same rate per thousand gallons. So once you hit the floor, everybody's paying the same. The people below the floor, like Paul, and I tried to explain to Paul, as a low water user, myself is a low water user, we are paying more per gallon.
Yes, absolutely.
Than anybody else. But what we wanted to do in the water committee was to structure it so people would have the incentive to not just turn the cap and leave it on, that they would try to save. So we built and we actually established, as you're pointing, the minimum cost of operation of a plant. So we have the base minimum. And then for those who are low usage, we said, you're only gonna pay the variable rate. Now, so this is, it was to just build in the best system we could. And so literally, we are penalizing the smaller ones. The average family according to the state of Vermont.
27,000. It's 27,000, but you took the 27,000.
No, that's, the, the size of the average household in Newport is 1.98 people. So should we take the usage which is for three people and use that as the base?
You use it for two.
Yes, we can use it for two, this is correct.
And, and maybe it's the choice of the two-person household as the benchmark that really is the issue. I mean, I think you guys, you have a meter site on Main Street. You're trying to revitalize the city, you're trying to attract people. You have got a rate structure that is based on the empty nester average family in Newport. And you're not gonna attract families with children if that is the way you structure it. I mean, it's a disincentive to come here.
Mr. Mayor, I see.
Yes.
We did, in this discussion last week, we actually, you know, spontaneous, we had two families here, members of a family here who have children, who metered and their rates went down. So they were, one of them is a poor family, has four people in the family, two young children. And the other family is a family of three. They both metered, their rates have gone down from the flat rate. So it's, it's a little bit of, I believe, of a fallacy to just make a broad statement that, you know, families are going to be penalized and we're gonna run them out of town. I don't think that's necessarily true. I think it's a broad stroke statement that, I don't think you have anything to back it up with.
Well, what I had said, I qualified my statement in the beginning that if a family of four use the state average of 27,000, that was my qualification. And that's an average set by the state of Vermont. And if they use that state average, their bill will double. So that's, I'm, if you, if you wanna get upset, get upset with the state of Vermont, not me, because I'm getting my information from the state of Vermont.
So I'm not gonna argue with you, I need a statement in the, you know, to address something that you said. That's the end of it.
I would like to talk to Mr., the mayor in reference to pay what you use. I agree, I don't disagree with that at all. So why am I getting charged sewer for all the water that I water my flowers with?
Because you'd have to have a separate meter for sewer.
Correct.
And. You can't have sewer without water. And it's a formula, and it costs more actually to run a sewer plant than it does a water operation. I'm gonna let.
But if I'm not using the sewer, why are you charging me for sewer?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know that the state doesn't really distinguish between water and sewer for building purposes. They figure that the water goes out and the sewer comes in. So there is no meter for, for sewer, it's all combined for every building across the state of Vermont.
Okay, and so why are we dividing into two, two categories? Why don't we just have?
Because you gotta track, because you have to track. You have two different systems. Sewer is a separate system from the water treatment and from the, it's a completely separate, and it actually costs more to run the sewer operation than it does the water operation.
Well, clearly, because the costs that you attach to the sewer are way higher than what you attach to the water.
Well, because you gotta treat it, you have to treat everything.
And I understand all that, but why are you even bothering to divide it into two category plan? If you're just gonna tell me that I have to pay the full amount anyhow, why don't you just have one category?
Before I go to Jennifer, did you have a question in the back?
Mr. Mayor, could you just let me know what you were referencing earlier? Was it the town budget?
Oh, this is the actual auditor's report. As of June 30th, 2021, is what I referenced as far as the, the numbers.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something?
You wanna look at that again?
No, I don't. So I wasn't on the water committee to set the rate, but I, I don't think the rates fired off personally. I metered, if I use 30,000 gallons in a year, we think the difference, between a 14 cent a thousand gallons.
For, for water, fixed rate of $2.90 per thousand.
It was the increase, 14 cents a thousand gallons.
That was the difference between Jennifer's math and our math.
Okay, alright, so if you use 14 cents because of the difference.
Yeah.
30,000 gallons a caution, $4.40.
No matter what they know, what you're putting in the paper.
Can I make another suggestion? I suggest that somebody contact the auditor to find out how they come to the calculation because in that audit, the beginning position was $2,300,000 and the ending position was $1,900,000. So I don't see where there's a surplus. To me, if your beginning position is $400,000 more than it was in the end, that's a lot. But I'm not an auditor, so maybe somebody ought to call and talk it.
I think we should, Jennifer had something.
Well, yes, I just wanted to say, the interesting thing about the rate schedule is if you, because of the number of non-used users we still have, if you change that floor that is there, then what's gonna happen is your lower users are going to have to pay more and the higher users will end up paying less. But if you change where, where you have that, that rate. It seems, it doesn't seem rational, and I know I have to hear some facts.
No, no, I, I, I hear what you're saying because the floor is an automatic charge no matter what, even if you don't use it.
Yeah, and so, and so this is one of the things that, that for some reason, you know, that usage is, it's, it's justifiable in more than one way. And, you know, it's, it's different.
But back when you guys separated schedules, my understanding was you were looking at trying to cover like the basic operating costs that were required, even if nobody.
Okay, okay, I think we've gone over that from the initial.
Oh, no, 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 it's important.
We've gone over that before, it's.
It is important because we're talking about raising the floor and I'm suggesting that maybe what should happen is that you folks should consider a connectivity fee. So it's not attached to a floor. It's not like you're getting a certain number of gallons for free. You have this connectivity fee to be attached to the system and then you're paying as you use your water.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm gonna, Mr., Mr., Mr. Woodward, he's the business owner in town.
Rick Woodward from Newport. Maybe you've already answered this in other meetings and I apologize if you haven't. How far along are we with the installation of the meters?
We've got about another two years left.
Do, do we have a rough percentage?
Yeah, you know, this was dated on March 2nd. Out of the 1,787 accounts, 951 have meters, leaving a balance of 836 to install. So that's a good two-year project.
Right, it just seems to me that once everyone's metered, most of this conversation will go away. And the whole idea becomes meaningful.
Yes.
That's why I asked the question.
Okay, Pam had, Pam and then Jennifer and then.
I have a slightly different question. Mr. Mayor, are you a member of the water commission?
The city council.
Right, but you're, you're separate from it. Because what I'm struck by is, yes, the numbers are all complex, but I don't think that you, who we elect, are really following along with them. It's, it's a lot of work. But are you, or do you read all of the water information? Did the comments of Ann make mistakes to you? It's all questions that keep us. Do you look at the fund where the folks surplus allegedly goes or doesn't go? How accessible is that information to you? I know that seems that it be accessible to us necessarily, but I do expect those we elect to be on top of it, and I'm not hearing that. And as a concern.
We review the income and expenses every month.
Yeah, but there's more to it than that.
But we also have to rely, we rely on the people we hire. You have a city manager who does the day-to-day operations, who reports to us and tracks. Jim is in the clerk treasurer's office. You have Tom Burney, a public works director. We have to have faith in what they are seeing as the numbers too. I mean, we look at the overall, like this, like the audit here, I was trying, thank God he found the page for me, which shows, because I was trying to find where it showed the net, net change in positions and the losses. And I do know you run, you run your enterprise funds like a business. You have to take in to cover the expenses.
And some of you have lived in this experience. Are you looking at the enterprise fund? Is that making it accessible to all of you? And if not, why not?
That's in the report we get, the Nemets report that you print out once a month. That does cover the water and sewer. We get a big thick, it's also posted on the website. That's that big income and expense report and that shows all the income and all the expenses year-to-date. That gets put up on the website once a month for the public to see. The council gets to look at it.
But this mysterious entity called the enterprise fund.
That's in there.
Who is actually looking at that?
That, that's used interchangeably. The enterprise fund is a fund that is used interchangeably with the water and sewer fund. It's the exact same thing.
And do you all know how it interchanges?
I mean, you can, you collect the revenues to cover your expenses.
Yeah, it's, it's not an interchange. It's, it's run very similarly to how we operate our operational budget. It's just applied to the water or it's applied to the sewer.
Did you have?
Um, I was just going, does somebody else have their? I was just going to make a motion that we just table the rates till next week. We can get, not next week, two weeks from now, that we can have just a more detailed explanation from the auditors. And I would like to also say that it's apparent from audience com, you know, comments here tonight that there is not faith in the elected officials. I would like to remind everyone that every March, two seats turn over on this council. Any one of you who know more than we do are more than welcome to put their name in the pool and sit at this table.
Jennifer?
Where do you table it? I, I wrote.
Actually, no, we had a motion, we had a motion, we need a second for the motion to table.
Table also.
For the next meeting.
To the next meeting, so it's being tabled to the next meeting.
Can you order to also explain this report? And why did this report show surplus, these reports from 2017 through 2021 show surpluses?
I'm gonna, I'll invite the auditor to the next meeting. Hopefully he's available, so let's leave a little, a little room just in case he's not.
Can he come in person or, I mean, as long as he doesn't have audio and he can present on his screen? Or it'd be better if he came in person if he could.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second to table this. And I will, normally when you have a motion to table, we cut all discussion off, you know, because a motion to table it.
Can I just make a comment, sir, Mr. Mayor? Real quick, two seconds.
Not really, no, I'm sorry. You have to do it at the next meeting. So motion to table it, it was made by Ms. Patterson, seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion. All those in favor say aye. Close, this is tabled to the next meeting. Oh, Chris? Are you still there?
Yes, absolutely.
Did you vote aye with that or no?
Yes, I did.
You voted aye, okay. Oh, Frank, what is your name for the record? So he has a record of your name.
Jennifer Urland.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I think Jennifer, yeah. Did everyone spoke, Jim has a note, ooh, okay. Okay, moving on. Oops, I lost my art there. Okay, the next item is a sewer allocation request for Willie Street. This is a preliminary wastewater allocation application. The application number is P22-003. Tom Burney received it April 28th, 2022. It's in the Bluff Road, parcel ID 106006.001. It's a commercial building, it's new construction. It's a commercial building, it's new construction. It's, um, domestic water. And it will be a hundred gallons per day. The water fee, the application fee has been paid. Okay. Questions from the council?
Yeah.
The application, the applicant is Laramie Water Resources LLC. And he's looking for water allocation, uh, wastewater allocation.
Well, I just, I just had a question because I don't necessarily understand the entire form. So at the top part, it says a commercial building, new connection, which I get. Then at the bottom, non-residential domestic? So what is, what is the definition of domestic for this? Because in my mind, I think a domestic is a house.
Domestic water, maybe?
It's like, it's, I just, I mean, water that's here, it's not coming from someplace else?
Uh, domestic water, I mean potable water, I mean, uh-
And the fee for the, oop, what's that? Hold on. Hold on. This is preliminary, we do have the allocation. And then the other part of this whole application is for the water allocation turn-on. And that permit is W two-two dash zero zero three, same parcel ID. The fee of sixty dollars has been paid. And there's a twelve-dollar reverse, reserve capacity fee also, which has been paid. So we need it, I know we have the allocation for the water and the sewer. This is a new building that's going up, um, on the Bluff Road for this, for this office. Questions from council members? Then we would need a motion to approve the application for water allocation turn-on. And we would also need the motion to approve the wastewater application.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion to, we approve both applications here.
Motion made by Mr. Wilson, is there a second?
No second.
Second by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose. Chris, Mr. Vashon said aye also. Um, the, the motion carries. Whoop, did you need this one to start with? Okay, the next item, new business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I got three vendor permits. Looks like these are ones we had last year. One is, uh, from Ron DeQuerion, is the fried dough field, I just had it to food, uh, food truck rally. And there's Smoking Joes, that's a, that's a food vestery. And one is Dan Oyer Rene Fontaine. They want for a Fourth of July event. So there's three of them. They paid the fees, so except for soup vestery. Mike still here?
Yeah.
Is he bringing in money for this?
I don't know, I haven't seen any money. The last conversation I had with him, it's like, you're going to drop off, just check in the certificate of insurance.
I haven't seen anything.
No.
So maybe we ought to scratch that one.
Scratch that one until we have the money and-
All right. So we need a motion on the, uh, Querion one and one for, uh, Dan Oyer Rene Fontaine. They paid the, they bill all the documents.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve that pool.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Charbonneau to approve the vendor permits, um, for Ron DeQuerion and then use of smoking, whatever.
Smoking Joe.
Smoking Joe, okay.
No, 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 Smoking Joe is one of the papers. Uh-
Brenny Fontaine and-
Sweet smoke concession, smoke on, I guess.
Okay. So a motion to be made, is there a second?
Also.
Made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Vashon, discussion. Then all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, ayes have, Mr. Vashon said aye, so the ayes have it.
Okay.
Any other new business?
No.
Always do. Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any new business?
No.
Mr. Vashon, any new business you'd like to bring up?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. All right, anything, no? Okay, we'll move on. Old business, Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any. Um, Ms. Patterson?
No.
Mr. Vashon, any old business?
No, thank you.
Nothing, okay.
I have three events that I want to highlight that are coming up in the next month, if I may. Um, Memorial Day Parade happening, starting at ten right out here. Is that true?
That's correct.
Cool. Just wanted to put that-
Moving forward.
I wanted to put that on people, folks radar. Um, on May thirty-first, uh, which I believe is a Tuesday night, starting at six o'clock at the Gateway, will be the kickoff for the Bylaw Modernization Grant. We'll be, um, hosting that through, um, a special meeting from the Planning Commission. The consultant has been hired and this is the kickoff meeting. So we'll be having some late refreshments at the Gateway and, uh, making this an official affair. So I hope folks will mark their calendar for that. Watch for advertising, which will start this week. And I just want to remind folks, on June fifteenth is our Remote Community Summit. We have, uh, fourteen different entities scheduled to present on, on that evening, so it should be nice. That's all I have, thank you.
The what community summit?
It's a remote community summit. We've done it, um, this will be our third one. It's just an opportunity for updating the community on what the city department heads are up to, as well as some community initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. The next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, June sixth, two thousand twenty-two, six thirty PM. I believe we have a public, is that the second public hearing that night?
Yes, it is.
For the, uh, Capitol plant. That's the second public hearing on the Capitol plant. And then, um, immediately following the hearing will be the regular city council meeting. And with that, we need an executive session to discuss the employment evaluation of a public officer. One, VSA three thirteen, three A three.
Mr. Mayor, before that motion is made, um, due to our very, very broad conflict of interest policy, um, I feel I have to recuse myself in this discussion. Um, I am, have a decades-long friendship with one of the town's city clerk assistants. And, um, when it's normal budgeting periods, I don't feel that's an issue. But since this is a budget, this is dealing with something outside of the normal budgeting system, um, I feel that I should recuse myself because of that long, decades-long friendship.
Okay, we need a motion for the executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion, and we enter to the executive session under, I don't want VSA three thirteen. How are you?
Nope. Okay, a motion to be made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, um, made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Vashon, discussion. And all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.